I'd like to call the November 16th, 2021 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for joining us for the meeting. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. I'd like to announce that any members of the public who are attending this meeting, who parked in the county's public parking facility, or who use public transit to travel to the meeting can get validation for your parking pass or transit pass from one of the sheriff's officers that is with us this evening. You can see them on your way out. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the county commissioners at our meeting this evening. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we now come to public comment. I'd like to read our procedures for public comment. The time limit for individuals to comment to the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with our county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is the chance for the public to speak to the board and for us to listen. The board reserves, never mind on that point. One other item I just wanted to mention, through our sign-in sheet, I see a lot of folks have signed up to speak to the issue about the low-barrier shelter. I just wanted to let everyone know, you're welcome to do that. The low-barrier shelter is not on the county commissioners' agenda tonight. We're not going to be voting on any approval or disapproval of the proposed city low-barrier shelter, nor are we voting to approve or disapprove any funding for that facility. So it's not on the agenda this evening. It doesn't mean the commission's for it or against it. It's simply not on the agenda for this meeting. But if you're here for public comment, you are allowed to speak to that issue or any other issue you would like to address to the board. So I'm going to go through and just kind of ask folks to come up when your name is called. And I'm going to start with Judith Kaufman. If you just come over to the podium, and you'll get a green light when you start, an orange light will come on when you've got 30 seconds left, and then you'll get a yellow light, and then you'll get a red light when your three minutes is up. And I would ask everyone to please discontinue your comments once your time's up, because we want to give everyone the same amount of time to speak to the board. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak. And first, I want to say that I'm not unsympathetic with people that are having different problems in their life. I spent about 30 years teaching unemployed and underemployed people job skills, so I know some of the issues that are there. I'd like to speak tonight because I think that the low-barrier shelter that is going to be, or wants to be placed at the Ramada Inn is not a bad idea, but it is not appropriate for that particular location. It's immediately adjacent to the homes of between 1,000 and 1,100 people. It's very close to elementary school, and it's in a thriving commercial area, and it's badly affecting all of those places. I'm in an apartment that is just several hundred yards from the Ramada Inn. We have people coming down the hill, running around. The cops have been there arresting people. We find feces and trash in our parking areas. We have had people overdosing. Other people are having sexual intercourse as they come into our property. Those are just some of the things that we're experiencing. I recently wrote an email to all of you saying that there has been notice in the press about how police activity in the area has not gone up. And really, the things that are really degrading our quality of life are things that happen so quickly that it's not appropriate to call the police. By the time you report somebody that's having sexual intercourse on your lawn, it's over. 911 isn't going to be there. But by the time you call somebody to complain about people interfering with your children's play, again, it's all over. So I think this needs to be placed in another location where it's not interfering with a thriving community's life. Thank you very much for your time. Bye-bye.
The next person that signed up is Barbara Melton.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, some of you know me very well. I've been a neighborhood activist here for over 38 years. We, and I say "we," the Haw Creek Community Association and the Coalition of Asheville Neighborhoods, which represent a large number as an umbrella group of neighborhoods in this area, have been working with the city on a monthly basis, meeting, trying to get answers about this low-barrier shelter. And frankly, there has been none. We have learned no more. At the first meeting, we asked, "How will this be funded? Exactly how much security? What are you going to do about the folks wandering over and over to Oakley Elementary?" And they said, "Call the police." Well, that's all well and good, but we don't have any police to call, because they need to get staffing, and that's going to take years. We have a problem, and it's not a NIMBY problem. It's a problem that the behavior of folks who go into these shelters need, they need counseling. There's not mental health counseling in North Carolina since the state legislature years ago removed that under the state umbrella. And now it's left up to the private sector, and they're all up to their eyeballs in patience. So right at the present moment, we have no answers on who will be providers for alcohol addiction, drug addiction, mental health problems. We also have asked, if you buy this and you get the funding to do it, exactly what will you do with the folks who refused your help and just wanted a warm place to sleep with their puppy dog and their girlfriend? And they said, "Well, we have to put them back out into the community." So that means they get turned back out into River Ridge area and Oakley area, Haw Creek area, where we're already having a problem. We also have asked, "How will you fund this if it goes as you think it might?" And Ms. Ball, as much as two weeks ago, was in a meeting, of course, she's now leaving Asheville, but Deborah Campbell, the city manager, was the only person, after a two-minute pause, that came up with the idea that, "Well, we can apply for federal grants." Well, we all know how that goes. We can apply until the cows come home. It doesn't mean you get any money. So where's it going to fall on the taxpayers? And frankly, I'm up to my eyeballs in taxes. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Barbara. Sybil, from 1201 River Ridge Drive. I'm sorry about the last name. I can't read it.
Hello?
Hi.
Before I begin my remarks, I would just like to say that I am not against a homeless or homeless shelter, if people are truly, truly homeless. But my name is Sybil Gru. I'm a resident of River Ridge Apartment Homes, which is a well-established, thriving residential community. It's been there for years. Also, the Asheville Mall, River Ridge Shopping Mall, with its many businesses, has been there for many years, both well-established, comfortable situations, and I might say profitable. Common sense would tell me that you don't take situations like this and move a low-density or a low-barrier wellness shelter there. Let me just say that I go walking, and I walk the stairs up to, from River Ridge, the area, the shopping area, to the Ramada Inn. Recently, in the past few months, on three different occasions, I have witnessed three police cars, one EMS car, and the fire engine. And they've all been there. When I asked one policeman, "Why is all of this?" He said, "Oh, it's just another drug bust." I've walked the stairs there. I have noticed syringes on the stairway. I have noticed syringes in the parking lot, and the people who have the businesses there will attest to this. So my question is, or my statement is, common sense would say that you don't disturb situations that are profitable, well-established, and a boon to the community, and replace or to turn an inn into what will not be exactly a homeless shelter, but it will invite more drug trafficking and an unpleasant situation. So thank you.
The next speaker who signed up is Kim. Reha, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim. I'm the property owner of River Ridge Business Center, and I'm here for the women, the children, and the seniors. I have worked very hard over the last 20 years to create an atmosphere that people feel comfortable walking and enjoying our property. I encourage children to come to after-school programs, and we have about 400 children. I don't know if that's, that should be the main thing you're thinking about. 400 children are within 1,000 square feet of this Ramada Inn. That's little kids running around. When you're asking for low barrier, asking for, you don't know what their history is. You don't know if they're violent. You don't know if our children are safe anymore. Without the IDs, without a history check, I cannot guarantee their safety. That would be on you guys if you guys let this go through. This is very dangerous, very dangerous. I have provided women, children, and seniors a safe place to walk and roam, and now it's taken away.
Next person who signed up is Tony Morris.
My name is Tony Morris, and I own Asheville Sunset Martial Arts. We moved to the River Ridge Shopping Center two years ago. We'll be 15 years old at the end of this year. I just turned 60 earlier this, earlier last week, and I put a lifetime of practice and effort into creating what's now a business that's nationally renowned for helping all walks of life have a better life through a traditional martial arts practice. Included in our current, about 500 families, we were at 720 pre-COVID and are building back to that, are currently over 350 kids. We run an after-school program as well that picks up from 20 different elementary schools. Our after-school program is known for its high quality of teaching team-building, leadership skills, conflict resolution skills, being accepting, and becoming the ever-more capable person. It's really important to us to place these kids in an environment where they're in an atmosphere where all those things are promoted, and not in an atmosphere that's counter to that and unsafe and scary in any way. I can say that since the homeless population has occupied the Ramada, that we've had an increase in negative activity that's been really scary to our kids and families in the form of the following. We find drug needles on the outdoor field behind CVS, which we have access to for our after-school program, outdoor play, on a daily basis. We now have to walk the field in an organized, Christ-Christ fashion to pick up those needles. We have had three separate occasions where fortunately this happened earlier in the day, but there was nothing to prevent it happening later in the afternoon. But we've had three different occasions, and I happened to personally be there fortunately also, where we had a homeless male who was a resident at the Ramada come into our space. We had three separate ones on three different occasions, and physically threatened our staff. And I was able to negotiate an exit, but it was pretty precarious for a bit. And back to one of the earlier speakers' point, there would not have been time to have gotten the police to have helped with that situation. This was an immediate situation. It was happening right then. I get to my work between 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM every morning. I'd say about 20% of the time, I met with somebody sleeping on our sidewalk. We found human feces on the front and back doors. And we regularly have people walking in our space, looking for public restrooms that's interrupting our service. So I'm in great support of getting help for the homeless, but I don't think this is a good match. Thank you very much for what you do.
All right, the next person that signed up is Nick Partial. Is your last name correct?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Nick Partial, and I'm here on behalf of Gray Cliff Capital and ownership of River Ridge Apartments. We have been at the asset since 2015, and also are involved in the Meadows Apartments and Reserve at Asheville. To combine, we have over 1,000 units invested in this community and Asheville as a whole. If you're not familiar with River Ridge, it is a quiet and normally peaceful environment. It's situated on 48 acres, which has beautiful, amazing mountain views, and even has the river right along it. Beginning in May of this year, the Ramada Inn began operating as a homeless shelter. River Ridge has not been the same quiet and peaceful community that we've been accustomed to the past six years. Surrounding merchants and residential communities have reached out with us with similar concerns, including concerns over escalating crime, drug dealing and drug waste, auto break-ins, loitering, petty crime, and more that they are also experiencing. Our management team has documented more than 50 known incidents specific to River Ridge, directly related to the Ramada project since May 1st. We are very familiar with the drug busts and related murder charges that were associated with the Ramada Inn, and gives us grave concern over the project. Gray Cliff takes health and safety of our residents, vendors, and on-site team very seriously. Beyond the extreme amount of time that these issues have required for many of our team, River Ridge has taken at our own significant cost expanded security patrols by private security services, expanded and enhanced LED lighting around the community, and are exploring remote cameras and additional fencing for the property. Our neighbor Verde Vista has already installed fencing around their entire community. We've invited Asheville police out on multiple occasions, including to our resident meetings, to share their best practices and ideas. Generally speaking, the APD has stated they recognize the problems but are way understaffed and unable to assist the community in the way it is needed. We had a conversation with Lucy Crowell, who works with the City of Asheville, is the Greenway planner. We plan on having conversations about improving the Greenway and including trail onto our property. Unfortunately, she was not even aware that the City of Asheville was pushing for this process and for the Ramada to be so close. Importantly, we are not against a shelter for the homeless. Gray Cliff and our property management team own and manage low-income housing, all types throughout the Carolinas. We are against badly conceived, badly run, badly planned, and badly communicated low-barrier shelters that greatly impact the safety and peace of mind of thousands of taxpayers. We respectfully request that the funds not be earmarked to the Ramada to make a permanent low-barrier shelter, and that current residents be relocated to a more appropriate facility in Asheville. Thank you.
All right, next is Chris Hancock.
Hi there. I'm Chris Hancock, and I live in the Beverly Hills neighborhood. I've lived there 18 years now. And so all of the shopping centers around me I frequent from time to time. And I can give you a little bit of a perspective from someone that shops there. I don't think this is an appropriate location for the Ramada Inn low-barrier shelter. And I know what that is. By the way, my background is I was a RN, and I've cared for many people that are, well, from all walks of life. And I was a businessman. And also, the police department here, why add to their burdens? Because we all understand what's happening now, right? That out of 227 police officers, which would be their maximum capacity, if I'm not mistaken, there's 65 vacancies. So I guess everybody knows that. So that's 28% below what optimal level of policing. You know, so how can we put more on them? And I know this is a personal anecdote. I went up to the Walmart Shopping Center. It's a half a mile from the homeless shelter, okay? And I like a couple of the takeout restaurants there. During COVID, we've frequented many. In three different times, I've seen drug transactions, okay? When grown men are exchanging, you know, packets or whatever, you see they're giving things back and forth. That's a drug deal, in my opinion, especially when it's the same place. And when these people don't get on the bus, when the bus comes by, they don't get on the bus. They're still staying there. The other day, I was waiting for my order, and again, I see that. And so I drove by the guys. There's a guy with a jacket over his head, seated on the ground, shooting up, right at the Walmart Shopping Center. And I was just appalled. I'm from Atlanta, Georgia, so I've seen a little bit in my life. And to wrap it up here, tourism is important to Asheville. Security, safety, people like that. I think there's a lot better uses for these funds, children's education, the police force. I mean, I think I could hire policemen. Maybe it's more difficult than I think, but you could raise salaries, bonuses. And I've also watched some of these meetings online, the city council. And I appreciate what you do. I appreciate what they do. But there seems to be a great lack of expertise. This whole thing seems experimental, because I just watched one. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Next is Steve Carter.
There's not too much I can say, more than what's already been said. So rather than repeat all of the rather legitimate complaints I've heard, as a resident of the River Ridge complex, I've seen most of this myself in the last six years or so that we've been living there. So instead of repeating these things, let me instead speak to a structural question. And that is, the way that the advocates in the city government have gone about promoting the idea of having a homeless, low-barrier homeless shelter at the Ramada. And I can understand their possible viewpoint. Certainly, there's a decrepit Ramada Inn. The person who owns it would like to sell it. There's no big-box anchor stores in the malls around there. It's not an area where the wealthy would choose to retire to in general. There's not a lot of tourists in that area. So why not shift the homeless over into that area? No one in Monford is going to complain about that. In fact, people in other parts of the city are going to say, "Ah, wonderful, as long as it's not here." Well, we don't hear much of that sort of thing from the people who are advocating for it. We don't hear why they want it. When they're asked questions, as one of the other speakers mentioned, about details, it's very often things like when they're asked, "Well, how are you going to manage some particular aspect of it?" It's, "Well, that is to be worked out with the management company that we will hire, because we, the city, are not in the business of running such a place. We're going to," and we have created a request for, proposal for this, "have a company come in, and they will run it, and we'll have to figure that out then." I would like to suggest to you that before approving funds for this kind of a request, that you look very closely at the motivations behind it, and what they intended to accomplish, and how it will be done over any particular period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Doug Horn.
Thank you. I am Doug Horn. We own the River Ridge Shopping Center. We have 28 active businesses there that pay taxes, property tax, sales tax, provide goods and services to the community. And you've heard all the severe problems we've had. It's been a nightmare. We've had to hire off-duty police. We've had to call the Asheville Police Department many times. They've arrested a lot of people. We've had people in the dumpsters. We've had all kinds of human waste on the property. We've had needles. You've heard all these things. Let me just say that we've researched other communities, and we don't know of any city that owns a shelter. I think New York City has 13 shelters. They don't own any of them. They contribute to faith-based or charity-based shelters. Knoxville doesn't have a shelter. Louisville, Kentucky doesn't have one. Durham, which one of the Sunrise ladies mentioned, does not own a shelter. It's faith-based. The cost of this is not only the initial cost, it's the fix-up cost of the hotel, and then the operating cost, and the liability, lawsuits that will come because of this. The appraisal on the Ramada Inn was 3.6 million early this year. It went to 8.6. It went up $5 million. The City of Asheville contracted for 9.7. We called the tax appraiser people. We talked to them twice. Did the owner of the Ramada Inn ever object to a $5 million increase? What we need is a, like Michael Woods, who runs an accountability shelter on Patton Avenue. Check with him. He has another property that he has volunteered to the City of Asheville, that he could set up an accountability shelter, where you check the people out at 7:30, they come back at 4:30, and a drug test, an alcohol test. If they don't pass the test, they don't get back in. The average person stays at the Western Carolina Shelter, has saved 10 to 15 million, 10 to 15,000 dollars after nine months. They feel good about their lives. He's really helping the homeless people. The low-barrier idea is, as Michael Woods says, is a disaster waiting to happen. Thank you.
First of all, just want to recognize the tough situation that this body is in, and also the city. There's obviously a problem here in this community with homelessness, and it's getting worse, it seems, every week. I just want to say, I don't want to repeat much of what you've heard. I just want to give you my quick story. I grew up here. I was born and raised in Beverly Hills, went to Reynolds High School, moved away, have been gone for a long time, and I decided to return a year ago to just be in town to help my mom, who still lives in Beverly Hills. And just in the last year, I've seen things deteriorate. She's had some crime on her property for the first time ever. The mails being stolen from mailboxes on her part of Beverly Hills. And I do a lot of walking around River Ridge Mall, since I live at, I live at River Ridge Apartments. And I've seen a lot of the things that you've heard testified here too tonight. I just want to say that all of y'all are smart, good people, or you wouldn't be in the position that you're in. And I just appeal to you to not put this shelter in this location. It's just not a good idea with the amount of homes that are right behind it. And I will say, in the last year, I've seen the River Ridge marketplace rebound from COVID. It's vibrant again, and as you know, the cafeteria is reopened. And the homeless shelter is going to have a negative impact on those businesses. So thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Hock Young Kim, and I own the second stand at the River Ridge Marketplace there. Well, I mean, I don't want to get into, you know, what everybody said, but I've seen all that happening, you know, from my store. But it's been hard, we had a hard time during COVID-19, and we finally getting a little better now. And this thing, I'm afraid that it might push us to close the store down. I mean, you know, some of our customers afraid to come down to my store because of homeless people, you know, walking around, and sometimes they are screaming for no reason and stuff. So please reconsider. I mean, you know, our livelihood is in jeopardy, really. Thank you.
I manage River Ridge Marketplace Shopping Center for Mr. Doug Horn, who spoke earlier. I won't rehash the problems that we're having there that started in April, once the city started using the Ramada Inn for a temporary low-barrier shelter. But I would like to point out that generally on these kind of projects, we talk like this is something that's going to be happening in the future. But this is for the residents and tenants at River Ridge. This is a nightmare scenario that's been going on now since April. And, you know, every month, the city seems to kick the can down the road and postpone voting on this item, this agenda. And every time, that seems like a victory, you know? The tenants get excited, at least, you know, at least it's been postponed, at least it's not been made permanent. But it really isn't a victory when it just gets delayed, and we're still dealing with these same issues every day. And it really came to a head a few weeks ago when we had the first murder over there in our community tied directly to the Ramada Inn. And again, it just, the situation keeps getting worse. So, you know, that's, I know we're not, you're not discussing this matter tonight, but it's so important to the people there, the residents, the tenants, and their life, you know, their livelihood, that, you know, we couldn't run the risk of it, of not showing up if it were going to be on the agenda. There was some confusion on that end, and part of that's my fault. I do apologize for anyone who came expecting the vote to be tonight. But it's so important that we have no choice but to continue, to continue to come to these meetings until it is voted on. But thank you for your time.
No problem, thanks. Next is Chris Navant.
Hello, my name is Chris Navant. My wife and I are McDonald's owner-operators, and our McDonald's is located in the River Ridge Shopping Center. We've operated that store since 2017, and we would like to state our opposition to the homeless shelter located in the Ramada. As you know, many people, we've had increasingly difficult problems with the homeless people in the area. The homeless people go car-to-car in the drive-thru and knock on windows at the McDonald's drive-thru, asking for money, and implicitly threatening our customers. Now, you picture yourself in a drive-thru at McDonald's, and somebody pounding on your window and asking you for money. And if you don't give it to them, then what's going to happen? I've personally been threatened physically when I tried to get them out of the drive-thru. They're laying on the sidewalks in the morning when people come to work. We clean up used heroin needles every day in the parking lot. Who wants to do that? And we have 70 employees at that McDonald's. Now, are we pride ourselves at McDonald's as trying to provide a safe and respectful workplace for our employees? It's becoming increasingly difficult to provide that when our employees come to work lots of times in the dark, early in the morning, and they're physically threatened by homeless people. We've had multiple, multiple problems with broken windows. And let's face it, they're all drugged out of their mind. They don't even know where they are. And so we are asking you to use common sense in rejecting this proposal. We do not want, as an employer, we do not want our employees threatened by these people. And who's looking out for their interest? Who's worried about the interest of our employees? They're coming to work, trying to make a living, supporting their families. Do they deserve to be threatened every day, verbally abused? We have had our lobbies closed for six months. It's not because of COVID, it's because we, our employees are afraid to open the lobbies. So, you know, we're asking you to reject this bad idea. We do not want the homeless people in our places of work, and just like you don't want them threatening your family and your places where you live, we don't want them threatening our employees. So we're asking you to use common sense in rejecting this proposal once and for all, and to help protect our investments are the homeowners and the business owners and the property owners there. You don't want that in your neighborhood, we don't want it in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Donna Early.
I am Assistant Manager at Hammerix. We have been there over 30 years, and we do oppose the low-bearing shelter. We have never seen as many problems as we have today with the drug addicts, like we're talking about urinating in front, camping in front of our stores, in the back of our dock, where our docks are, living in cardboard boxes on our docks. We have to run them off so we can get our trucks in, unload our trucks. We used to have, all of our customers used to be walkers in the mall, used to do exercise in the mall, no more. They felt unsafe, just walking around. We used to have the kids running around, used to have things in the back for the kids. Can't do that no more. So as Hammerix, part of Hammerix, we do oppose the low-bearing shelter.
Frank Marshall.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Frank Marshall. I live in Beverly Hills with my family. I just wanted to give my perspective on what we've seen in the last six months. For the first time since we have lived in Beverly Hills, I do not let my daughters walk alone in the neighborhood. In the past six months, our car's been broken into, we've had, we have to now keep everything locked in the basement. We've had multiple things stolen, our children's bikes, leaf blowers, lawn equipment. And unfortunately, when we called the police because of the staffing problem, they said, "We can't help you." And they said, "You're welcome to file a report online for your insurance, but honestly, there's nothing we can do." So that's a little scary for us, because we feel like we're being told by the police that we're on our own. And I personally have driven up around River Ridge and driven up into the Ramada Inn property, and have seen people shooting up and doing other things that I don't want to mention. And my understanding, it's just at one-third capacity right now. Also, when I, I've let my pets out, middle of the night, 3 o'clock in the morning, I see people wandering up our street. And nobody should be wandering up a street at 3 o'clock in the morning. Nothing good is going to happen there. So my family are big supporters of Homer Bound, always have been, my extended family also. What we love about Homer Bound is the wraparound services and the support. I think the Ramada Inn project is misguided because that support is not there. I think it's, you are housing people, which I know is, you guys are in a difficult situation, but you're putting kindling onto a fire. And I think it's just nothing, nothing good is going to happen when this population has increased. I think it's misguided for a low-barrier shelter. Wraparound services, it was fully, fully supported, and there were measures taken to ensure the safety of the community. That's a different story. But again, thank you. I know this is a difficult position you're in, but I appreciate the work you're doing on it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Frank. Don Yelton.
Well, I'm going to have to throw the mask out, and I'm going to have to throw out the Cherokee deal about Native Americans, because what I've heard tonight, number one, y'all better keep coming. That's the reason they ain't voting on it. You can't come one time, get up and talk, and they'll never come back. There's one thing people like that understand in the city council, and you know what it is? Votes. Votes. Votes, folks, so you better be back. I've been doing this for over 30 years. And you get to come up here, and they let you speak at them for three minutes, and they won't answer your questions. What are you thanking them for? They're getting paid to do a job, and the job is to manage. Let's cut to the chase. Homeless is another word for druggies, period, ended discussion. You will not solve the drug problem with needles and government programs. You'll only solve it with an emotional heart experience. And notice, I didn't say Christian, or this, or that, or the other, but it has to have an emotional experience to solve the drug problem. You've already heard the wraparound. Let the nonprofits, let the religious organizations handle this. That's what you do. The truth is, you got a guy build a motel, he milks it for every dime it was worth, he can't now fix it back up to standard to keep his franchise, it's going to cost more, it'd be better to build a new one, and he's found some nonprofit that's going to give him $9 million for it. He gonna come out smelling like a rose. And you all are going to end up taking the brunt of it, and the City of Asheville will be fine with that, because that solves some of their problems. Just like you all on the consent agenda have to take over the 911 calls for the police in Asheville. How they going to take them? They can't. Who you going to call? Next step's going to be, the Sheriff's Department will be having to take the police department over, because they've lost 102 cops, folks. Not 60-some, 102. So I'm telling you right now, you better remember what I said, and you better stay on them, and you better go to the city with twice this group. You can find it if you all value your community. And I don't know about you, I was born and raised here, and that's why a lot of people move here, because it's a wonderful place. But it's going to hell in a handbasket, folks. I don't know any other way to say it. And if you'll notice, most of them sit up there with their heads down and looking at something else. They don't like what I say, because I shoot straight, and I don't back down. And I'll continue to shoot straight for every day. But Avril, I hate to say this, but thank you for missing me last week, and don't let anybody get you in trouble for that, okay?
All right, the next speaker is Denise Knapp. I think she's in the overflow room. And I'm going to go ahead and read the other names of the other overflow speakers, just so they can be aware that they're coming up. Joanne Whiteside, Corey Willharm, Rondell Lance, Maggie Charlton, Brian Tompkins, and Laura Tompkins. They don't all need to come at this time, but I just wanted them to be where they're coming up. Sure.
Hello, and thank you for listening to us this evening. I'm Maggie Charlton, and I live at the River Ridge Apartments. I'm concerned about the low-barrier shelter. Earlier in the year, I wrote to the city, and I asked them questions. One of the answers was stunning to me. The question was, "Are you going to accept sexual offenders at the shelter?" Their answer was, "We don't know." Oakley Elementary and the Oakley Library are nine-tenths of a mile in walking distance from the Ramada. Would you want your children at Oakley Elementary with the Ramada Shelter as it is currently being run? Please find another location. You're not being fair to those of us that live there, you're not being fair to the children, and maybe most of all, you're not being fair to the residents at the Ramada, who are, we hope, going to learn how to be good neighbors, and they're not learning that now. Thank you for your time.
Is Denise Knapp here? Come on up, Denise.
I ran from the back.
Joanne Whiteside.
Y'all having a good day? I know I'm on a timeframe.
Go ahead, Denise.
My name is Denise Knapp. My husband and I moved here in 1982 with Domino's Pizza. So we brought Domino's Pizza to the area. I've had Merle Norman cosmetics for 35 years. We have rented from Mr. Horn for probably 30-something years of that. I want to personally thank you, Mr. Horn. I want to thank Mickey Ray, our sheriff, and I want to thank Brian Robinson for everything they are doing in our shopping center to keep the homeless off of our customers and out of our doors. The one thing they haven't, they've mentioned everything, everything's been covered. But the one thing they haven't mentioned is the amount of theft that's going on in our shopping center. Dollar General closes most of the time because of the theft. You go in there, and the shelves are empty. There's nobody that's going to stand there and work and take that kind of abuse. They're not going to do it. So everybody's already said everything that needs to be said. not gonna do it. So everybody's already said everything that needs to be said. I hope and pray that you all will vote with your community, and that you will get rid of this homeless shelter. I'm worried about the kids. There's a lot of kids there. There's Oakley Elementary School right across the street. Do you want your kid approached by a pedophile with his penis hanging out? Is that what you want in Asheville? Do you want tourism to go down? You want taxes to go down? You want money to go down in Asheville? That's the direction we're headed. I thank y'all for your time. I'm not happy about this, and I hope you vote with your community. Y'all have a good night.
Next is, um, Joanne Whiteside. Corey Willharm?
I have lived in Oakley for thirteen years, and have watched it grow from just a neighborhood into a thriving, caring community of working-class citizens. Up until recently, I've always felt safe in my home, walking to the library, which you just saved, thank you, and play, and playing with my two young boys at the park. In the past couple of months, the theft and disturbances have been unsettling. I've had to purchase security cameras, and no longer allow my kids to play alone in our front yard, there's constantly vagrants walking around the neighborhood. A Ring camera caught someone trying to steal shoes off my neighbor's porch in the middle of the day. I recently found a bag full of pornographic material five hundred feet from my home on the side of the road. This is not the type of neighborhood in which I want my kids to grow up. At a community meeting on October fifth, Kathy Ball stated that the residents' issues are so severe that they are not suitable for congregate housing. Yet city council doesn't seem concerned with them congregating across the street from Oakley Elementary School. The fact that the city began the process of purchasing the Ramada without input from the community goes against the twenty-year vision that they created, saying that they strive to create a connected and engaged community. They stated that city government is transparent, but when starting this process, they were very opaque. Ms. Ball stated that annual operation costs will be about two-point-five million dollars. Should the city be awarded these COVID funds, who will cover that cost once the COVID relief is gone? If the shelter is full, where do the rest of the unsheltered go? I've emailed city council multiple times, and I've only received two responses, neither of which addressed my concerns or answered any questions. The lack of background checks, sobriety, and curfews is extremely concerning. Ms. Ball used the excuse that they're already here to combat the notion that the shelter will draw more homeless in. That is not a responsible answer, because as I mentioned before, when these individuals with severe issues follow that beacon, where will they go if the shelter is full? So far, two murders have been connected to the Ramada, and while I know that the people arrested were not shelter residents, they were drug dealers catering to the drug addictions of shelter residents. That was something Ms. Ball specifically stated that they were concerned about, and it's already happening. The funds you are awarding would greatly benefit the small businesses in the area. It could help the stretched-thin first responders, go to teachers' wages and school supplies to help thousands of kids who are behind due to lack of in-person instruction from the pandemic. The funds could enhance parks, so as to create a community where children grow up safe, and in turn, stay to raise their own kids in the same neighborhood. A neighborhood that is not safe is not a neighborhood. Our children and community need to feel safe walking to that library that you so wonderfully saved. So I'm respectfully asking that these funds be used in a much more productive way. Thank you.
Rondell Lance?
Chairman Newman, I say Chairman Fierro, and the rest of the board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Rondell Lance. I'm president, paternity order police, Lodge One in Asheville. Uh, Mr. Newman, I would request, what's the policy if I, uh, want to do more than three minutes?
Uh, you have to have eight other people give up their three minutes who have not already spoken and are present in the room.
What about the overflow room? I've got some in overflow room, and I've got several in here.
You need to, you need to show me eight people who give up their time. That's the policy.
You want me to go get them out of the overflow room, bring them in here, is what you're saying?
You think you have eight? Yes. If you don't have eight people, you only get three minutes.
Well, do I, what I'm asking you, sir, do, then do I need to go to the overflow room and?
Yeah, I'm just, if you think you do, that, that would be the process, yeah. You need, they need to come in here, and they need to raise their hands and give up their time.
All right. How many in here do I have that would give up their time for me to speak?
There'll only be people who have not spoken and want this gentleman to have ten minutes to speak. I see three. Need five more. I see three.
One, two, three, four. Or to get three for, for him not speaking, that, he would count as three people if I get him not to speak.
All right, I need to see, I need to see eight.
Uh, so you need me to go get them and physically bring them in here?
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Okay, while you do that, I'm gonna go to my next speaker, Brian Tompkins. Is Brian here? Yes, yes.
Hi, um, my name is Kim Gudger. I'm from the first family in Asheville. The Gudgers were, uh, made generations, raised in the River Ridge community in East Asheville. And what I feel like that you guys are doing is appalling. My fourth-generation grandfather owned that stretch of land at one time, and it was a beautiful farm, raised kids. And, you know, as generations go by, I understand that it can be sold. Um, but I'm, I'm living there now, and I'm really debating on whether to live here or go elsewhere. Um, it's not a safe place. My eighty-year-old father walks in this area. He's come across numerous things. Not to say that he hasn't made friends with some of the homeless. They are bright, intelligent people who are worthy of having a place to stay, just not here. They've got more opportunities than I do. And I'm a single, divorced female living with my two parents. I, I don't know if you all have thought about this, but there's plenty of businesses up, out there at River Ridge. Are you afraid to lose that tax base, too? I'd like to see this restored to what it was ten years ago, or even two years ago. It's not a safe place for kids. My sister is the, um, church secretary at Oakley Baptist Church. She's had to call the police several times. She's had people defecating on the church steps, breaking in, set up a tent, having sex on the church steps. That, uh, that's not right. And if we're gonna give them housing, I mean, they've got microwaves, coral pools, and cell phones, they've got it all. I don't have that. I don't have the opportunity, and I work every day, long hours to build things. I work in the industry where we start ground up. It's not right. It's not fair. There are people hiring all over the place. They need jobs. Thank you.
Yep.
I've got them here. The ones that were also.
Uh, it's coming in. All right.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Okay, everybody who wants to give up your time, please raise your hand, and keep them raised for a moment, please. Okay, all right. So, um, you've got the time. And all the folks who raise your hand, please recognize you're, you've given up your time to speak. Okay? Thanks. All right. Go ahead.
And also, can I take my mask off?
Yep, it's fine while you're at the podium. When you, uh, leave the podium, please put it back on.
All right. Mr. Brandon, Commissioner Brandon, I say Fierro and the rest of, of the commissioners. My name is Rondell Lance, president of paternity order police, Lodge One in Asheville. We represent, men and women of law enforcement in Buncombe County, uh, Haywood County, I mean, not Haywood, Buncombe, Hendersonville, Madison, and Yancey are members of our lodge. My position is elected position. Last December, I was elected for another two-year term. And that's why I'm before you tonight. When our officers come to us with issues and problems that concern them, they come to me and my board members and ask for help. And that's why I'm here for you tonight. The Buncombe County employees have come to me and said, "We're very grave and concerned with some issues going on with Buncombe County and with the Buncombe County Commissioner's Office." And so that's why I'm here tonight. Are there some bad cops? Yes. Are there some cops that need to be fired and terminated? Yes. Are there bad cops that need to be charged criminally? Yes. But that's less than two percent of the men and women across this country that do the job every day. My father was a minister. Are there bad ministers? Are there bad priests? Yes. Are there priests and ministers that need not step back into pulpit? Yes. Are there priests and ministers that should be charged criminally? Yes. We've seen that in Buncombe County with some of the priests. But that's less than two percent of the priests and ministers. My sister's a school teacher. Are there bad school teachers? Yes. Are there school teachers that should lose their jobs in their tenure? Yes. Are there school teachers that should be charged criminally? Yes. We've seen that in Buncombe County with school teachers having sex with students. But that's less than two percent. If I wanted a job with Buncombe County, and I was gonna be on a job affecting the community, working in the community, but you looked on my Facebook page, or you looked on my Twitter page, or you looked on my, uh, uh, whatever other apps they are out there, and you see where I said, "Most of the ministers and priests are pedophiles. They can't help it because it's the nature of their job. They're around kids all the time. They're pedophiles, the majority of them, and those that aren't won't, won't tell on the ones that are." You should not hire me. You would not hire me, and you should not hire me. And if I had on my Facebook page, Twitter page, that I thought most teachers were sexual predators, and it's inherent in their job because they're around kids all the time, they have power over kids all the time, I should not be hired. You wouldn't hire me, and you shouldn't hire me if I had that view out on the internet. But you have hired someone who's just as biased against law enforcement, and that's Ms. Rachel Edens. And I brought some of her tweets tonight that I'm gonna read right quick, what she says about law enforcement. "They are murdering more than individuals. They are murdering our communities. The chauvin, trial, and the right murder have me nearly incapacitated. These men were my brothers, and I'm breaking under the weight of my grief." Second page. "How can, how anyone can put a six-year-old child in a squad car like a criminal is beyond reason. Unless we admit the psychopathic nature of white supremacy dehumanizes blackness down to our children, I do not know these, how these people sleep at night." Page three. "I drove past a police cruiser on my way to Walgreens and had a screaming panic attack at sight, on sight. You try driving the speed limit and between the lines while pleading, 'God, please don't make me die today.' That's what black folk live with every single day." Next page. "What if actually they were good cops? But what can you do when your profession originated in slave patrols?" Lie, that's not true. "Are the good cops going to build something better? Are the good cops going to speak up and speak out? Will the good cops call for reform?" Spoiler: no. Next page. "I can't imagine watching white people think they are making progress with days of remembrance for George Floyd. It highlights the fact that many, if not most, white Americans just realize that black lives are in constant danger on May twenty-fifth. Every single day, at least one black person murdered by the police." Lie, that is not true. "And white supremacy could and should be remembered. And why is there no Breonna Taylor Day of Remembrance?" Next page. "The police continue to murder us with what seems an uptick in chauvin conviction. We will not accept these terrorist roubles for the carriage of actual justice." White Americans only paid attention to George Floyd because they, white Americans only paid attention to the lynching of George Floyd because they were at home and needed something to do on breaks from baking bread and waiting for their backorder copies of Kinda and D'Angelo. The FOP president, as our members, our board, we call on Ms. Edmonds to resign. If she will not resign, we call on this board to terminate her. To be openly biased, how would you expect any member of the Buncombe County Sheriff Department to respect anything that she would say, or take anything that she would say seriously? How would this community feel? And how could they look at her, and she's the one that's supposed to be overtaken of making the community better, with this open bias put out on her Twitter page? So tonight, we call for her termination, or this Buncombe County commissioners do whatever it takes to have her terminated from the position she's in. Thank you.
All right, the next person that signed up is Brian Tompkins, and then Laura Tompkins. Are they in the room, Lamar, or are they in the overflow? Okay, all right. Uh, I've gone through everyone who's signed up. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the board during public comment, who hasn't spoken already? All right, thanks to everyone who took time to come out and speak during public comment. The next item on the agenda, we've got a couple of presentations. Uh, the first is Native American Heritage Month Proclamation, and Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara is going to, uh, present this item.
Good evening. Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara, very honored to be standing with Amy and Sonia Sunuk, who are both employees of Buncombe County. And, uh, I'll read the proclamation and then present it to them, and Sonia will be making some remarks. This is a proclamation in honor of Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Buncombe County is committed to creating an inclusive community that celebrates diversity and ensures all residents have equitable opportunities to lead healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable lives. And whereas, in honoring the cultures, traditions, and accomplishments of Native Americans that have shaped our country, we also acknowledge our nation's history of colonialism that has inflicted discrimination, deprivation, violence, and genocide upon indigenous peoples. And whereas, the area currently known as Buncombe County, North Carolina rests on land that was first inhabited by the Cherokee, their ancestors, and other indigenous peoples. And whereas, the traditional territory of the Cherokee covered more than a hundred thousand square miles of what today is western North Carolina, eastern Tennessee, northern Georgia, and upstate South Carolina. And whereas, in the early eighteenth century, the estimated population of the Cherokee people was thirty-six thousand, but by seventeen seventy was only about seven thousand due to forced relocation, consolidation of towns, and smallpox outbreaks. And whereas, white settlers began arriving in what would become Buncombe County in the seventeen sixties and laying false claim to Cherokee land. And whereas, following a massacre led by Griffith Rutherford, leader of the Salisbury District militia, virtually no indigenous inhabitants were left in the present-day Buncombe County region. County region. And whereas the Cherokee people endure to this day, having survived catastrophic diseases, loss of their ancestral lands, forced relocation to a reservation, long-term mismanagement at the reservation, family separations through the removal of children to boarding schools and termination. And whereas more than 8,000 members of the Eastern Band of the Cherokee now live in the Qualla Boundary just to our west. And whereas we recognize and honor the generous contributions of the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians to our economy, culture and community. And whereas we seek to repair the trauma of past oppression and broken trust, both locally and regionally, by lifting up indigenous cultures and voices and striving together to build a future of shared hope and promise for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that on the 16th day of November 2021, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month. A time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures of indigenous people, to raise awareness about our shared history, to recognize that truth must come before reconciliation and to acknowledge the important contributions that Native Americans have made to our community and our nation. Signed by Chairman of the Board, Brownie Newman.
C.O., which means hello in Cherokee. My name is Sonia Sunook and this is Amy Sunook. We're both members of the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, proud members. I'm extremely honored to be here and accept this proclamation on behalf of the Cherokee people. When I was young, I can remember my grandfather, Edward Sunook, talking about growing up on the reservation with tears in his eyes. He talked about the poverty. He talked about the boarding schools. And he talked about the Cherokee language dying. And he talked about the violence that his people endured. This proclamation is a positive direction towards truth and reconciliation for the Native Americans. One, my grandfather, my family and over 13,000 enrolled members of the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, as well as the citizens of Buncombe County should be proud of. Wado, which means thank you in Cherokee.
Thank you. Thank you so much to both of you for being with us. We really appreciate it. All right. And next we have a proclamation recognizing Adoption Awareness Month, and Commissioner Amanda Edwards is going to read this proclamation.
I believe Lizzie Shimer is here to join me. I'm joined by Lizzie Shimer and Susan Garland, who is our adoption coordinator with Buncombe County Department of Health and Human Services. Whereas Adoption Awareness Month is celebrated to call attention to the fact that every child deserves to grow up in a loving, nurturing, permanent home and that this experience lays the foundation for a happy, productive childhood. And whereas in Buncombe County, there are 304 children and 40 young adults aged 18 to 21 in custody in Buncombe County. Whereas 35 children achieved permanency with their forever families through adoption July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. Whereas during the month of November, Buncombe County Health and Human Services will continue to focus on children who need permanent adoptive families and honor families who have adopted children, as well as those who work to address the impacts of childhood trauma through safe and stable forever homes that meet the unique needs of children in foster care. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the county of Buncombe as follows. That the month of November 2020, 2021 be proclaimed Adoption Awareness Month in Buncombe County. That all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, businesses and others be encouraged to celebrate adoption and honor adoptive families by increasing their awareness of the issues of adoption and helping to focus attention on the need for adoptive parents and the children who are waiting for permanent homes. That this proclamation be effective upon its adoption. Adopted the 16th day of November 2021 and signed by Chairman Brownie Newman. Thank you to our Department of Health and Human Services staff, to each of you who are working tirelessly to ensure that children in Buncombe County find their safe forever homes and to all of those adults who have signed up to be foster parents. That is a huge and significant commitment that you have each made, and we're really proud to honor the work of you all this evening.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you both for being with us this evening as well. Right. We do not have any public hearings this evening. Ms. Pender, do you have any items on the county manager's report?
Just a quick update, sir, on Ferry Road. Letters were mailed out to residents and property owners adjacent to the Ferry Road property. We share the current report and scenarios. Neighborhood engagement will begin mid-January. In addition to the neighborhood engagement, staff along with our consultants at Quanox will hold discussions with stateholder organizations to gather input from experts in affordable housing, environmental sustainability and the outdoor recreation space. We will share that input and Phase Two continues with the other commissioners.
Thank you. All right. We don't have any old business. We come to new business. And the first item is consideration of a budget amendment for the homeowner grant program. And there's an additional funding request for this initiative. And Jennifer Barnett, our budget director, will explain this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Actually, we'd like to go ahead and turn it over to our Economic Services Division Manager, Director Philip Harden. He's got some information as an update on the program.
Okay. Terrific. Philip, thank you for being with us. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Commissioners. I think there's a presentation. We'll talk a little bit about the homeowner grant and where we're at right now with that process. And the first slide is really just a reminder about the, the policy around the homeowner grant and what was approved back in, I believe, this July 13th. The max grant was up to $300. And then the town of Woodfin and the city of Asheville also chipped in some dollars, so the possibly $200 from the city or from the town of Woodfin. And that had to be the legal, the primary residence for five years, and the person would have had to have lived in that home for a year. And then they cannot participate in an existing exemption, tax exemption program. All right. So this was as of November the 9th. We had received 1,841 inquiries by that point. We had approved 468 of those. We had denied 342. And I, when we get to the assumptions, I'll explain that denial because it seems high, but there's, there's a reason for that. And so we had, um, we had a little over 1,000 still to process at that point. And the vast majority of those denials, as you can see, were for enrolled in another tax deferment program such as early disabled veterans or circuit breaker, which are the state exemptions that exist. 18% of the denials were for being over income, over 80%. And then there was 24% under other, the vast majority of those others were people who, who applied and as they talked with the caseworker realized they were over income and they just withdrew at that point. We did have other people who lived outside of Buncombe County apply. And then there was a few that the homeowner didn't follow up with us about requested information. Not many. And what I will say is if those, if those homeowners, if they didn't follow through and they come back to us before we close the program out, we'll reopen those applications that provide the information. As you can see, the county had allocated 300,000 for the homeowner grant. City of Asheville, 150,000 and Town of Woodfin, 15,000. And what we had spent through November 9th, we had 159,600 left for the county, 10,800 left for Woodfin and 113,400 for the city of Asheville. And just goes to show, 183 of those applications were people who actually lived in the city of Asheville, only 21 for Woodfin, and then 468 total for Buncombe County. I figured, when I did the percentages, the city, about 38, 39% of the applications actually lived in city of Asheville and about 4% lived in the town of Woodfin of all the applications that we had taken. So, the assumptions. And these are assumptions. Let me tell you what I did. Because we denied so many cases for people who were already receiving a tax exemption, and we did those upfront. And what I mean is, applications came in. We ran every one of those applications through the tax department to see whether or not they were already receiving an exemption before we ever even touched the case. And there was, as of November 9th, there was 240 of those. So to try to get an accurate, if you included those in your kind of calculations about assumptions, you skew the data some. So I took those off the top and looked at what was left over and what we had processed so far. And we were, we were approving about 82% of the applications after you take those, those off the top. We had a, well, over 1,000 remaining, so about 845 more approvals. So we were estimating at that point that we'd need about 253,000 more needed to fund the applications that existed. And we only had 159,000 left. So the ask was for 112,000. We were, I'm projecting, we would spend about 412,000 at that point as of November 9th. Let me go back. I didn't, the cutoff for applications was yesterday. As of November the 9th, we had the 1,841. It was on one of the slides. We ended up taking 1,999 applications. That was as of about 5:30 yesterday afternoon. So there's about 150 more applications on top of what you're seeing right now. And, and based on the numbers and the percentage of their actual city of Asheville, I'm estimating the city will spend about 102,000 and the town of Woodfin will spend a little over 10,000 of their 12,000. So there are questions about the homeowner grant. We hope to have everything wrapped up mid, I hope by, before Christmas. I hope by mid-December will be my hope. When we went into this, I, I would have probably said that if we take 1,000 applications, that would be a lot. And we ended up taking 2,000 applications. It's, it's a lot of work, a lot, a lot of work. And we've dedicated a lot of staff to run this program. And we've learned a lot. My, my other thought would be that sometime after first of the year, as we wrap up the program, we'd like to come back and do a summary, maybe February or so, with possible suggestions on, on ways that we can even improve the program for next year if the Commissioners decide to run the program again.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Any questions for Commissioners?
Just a quick question. Thank you so much for the, the update on this and to the staff who's been working on this. What are you hearing from community members who are taking part in the program?
I personally spoke because the tax department gave my phone number out as the person to talk to. So I've probably spoke with at least 300, 3, 400 of those applications over the phone. People were very appreciative, very appreciative of the opportunity. A lot of the, most of the folks that I spoke with were elderly and they may have been over income for the elderly exemption, but would qualify for the homeowner grant. Their income was somewhere between, say, the 31,000 for elderly exemption and the 42,000 for the homeowner.
That's interesting.
So, and I spoke with some people that were $5 over for the elderly exemption. Those kinds of things. So people were very grateful, you know, for, for the help around their property taxes.
And did people share that they were, they'd heard about it through the piece we mailed out? Or did you hear other ways that people were hearing about this or kind of getting connected?
I think the mailing did a vast majority of that, but then a lot of folks, I think, wrote, read about it in the paper or saw it on the news. So, but most people referenced the, the stuffing in their property tax bill.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner's wife, Philip, was there asking if you wanted to give a quick ERA update on how we're helping with our rental assistance? If you're interested.
Thanks. There's a couple other slides there too, yeah. The emergency rental assistance update, I wanted to give you a quick update on that. It's been a while since we talked about emergency rental assistance. So, and this was as of November the 9th also. As you remember, we have two, two pots of rental assistance, rental and utility assistance dollars, ERA 1 and ERA 2. And just a quick, to make it fast. ERA 1, you can help folks for up to 12 months worth of assistance, and that's either a rearage or going forward. ERA 2, you can help people for up to 18 months worth of assistance, either a rearage or going forward. And, and people can get a combination of both, but in any, they cannot exceed 18 months. If you, it's not like you can lock 12 on top of 18. So you cannot go past 18, regardless of which pot of money. And as you remember, we had about 7.1 million service dollars for ERA 1. We have about 5.3 million for ERA 2. And then when we finally did get the CDBG grant released, and we're using those dollars for mortgages. We had a, a list of people who were waiting for that. Just remember, we cannot serve people inside the C limits of Asheville with those dollars, but we're, the vast majority of those dollars are being spent toward mortgages because we have all the ERA money for rental assistance. So far with ERA 1, we're right at a little over $5.7 million. And ERA 2, a little bit over $330,000. And we spent almost 64,000 in CDBG already, and we just started that program about a month ago, if that. And we have another $571,000 that are pending payment. It means that we've approved them and, and committed to payment. We, it's just not been paid out yet. And you can see the numbers that, on the far side, we've approved about 2,200 ERA 1 applications, 125 ERA 2 and 36 mortgages with CDBG. Let me also, for you to understand, we're running these programs concurrently. There's a little bit of a difference in the definition of who's eligible for ERA 1 and ERA 2. So we start with ERA 1. If they don't meet that definition, we will look at them as ERA 2 to see whether to see whether or not we can help them that way. It helps to run the programs concurrently, that way, personally has to make one application and we, on the backside of that, will do the work to decide which which is the appropriate funding source for that family. All right, so we've received a little over three thousand inquiries. We've approved or assisted at least, at least once, two thousand, three hundred and eighteen individuals or families. We already talked about that some are not eligible for one but could be eligible for two. And that twenty-three hundred only takes into account the system, we can only track them one time. We've approved some families multiple times, they've applied more than once. We started this program back in March and we 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 did a rearages and are paying three months forward for everyone. So let me give you an example, if we we approved somebody in March, they could come back in because we probably paid the rent possibly through June. They can come back in and reapply at that point, as long as they've not exhausted those twelve or eighteen month limits. So, we have approved multiple, some folks at least twice. Are there questions about the emergency rental assistance program?
I'm just curious, when you did finally receive the CDBG funds, I feel like I've asked you this question before.
It was.
Like, six months ago, or?
We got the approval later last December.
Right.
We got the release of funds, I think it was sometime in September. My understanding is, you know, those funds came out out of the actual first stimulus bill, so the state had them a year ago, April. So, and I would be remiss if I didn't give a big shout out to my staff in the Economic Services Division. Let me tell you, we we've run all of these housing programs without adding staff. And it's been a, we've begged, borrowed and stole from program staff and and that's been hard on all staff. And everybody's stepped up, you know, our our food assistance caseload's increased forty-nine percent since the beginning of pandemic and Medicaid's increased thirty-three percent. So everybody is really stepped up in the Economic Services Division. They really care about the residents of this county and and they'll do the work to make sure that that safety net benefits are there and I really appreciate them very much.
Thank you for, thank you for sharing that. We appreciate that. Follow through and dedication very much as well. Commissioners, any questions?
No, I do just really want to say thank you to Philip and his staff for the exceptional job they're doing and it means a lot to our county. Thank you so much.
All right, are we going back to Jennifer now? Great.
Yes, thank you. So Chairman Newman related to the presentation and the information, based on the spending assumptions for Buncombe County. He was aboard in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two adopted budget, had set aside the three hundred thousand towards the program. But anticipation of the additional applications, we are requesting an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be appropriated from fund balance to be available for the remainder of the program applications to be funded. Again, if those dollars are not fully expended, they would fall through to fund balance and be unspent.
Commissioners, is there a motion for the budget amendment?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have several other budget amendments to consider. The next one is regarding a budget amendment for intergovernmental agreement nine-one-one consolidation with the City of Asheville.
And Chairman Newman, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant County Manager DK Wesley so that she can provide some some reinformation around the consolidation.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
It's with a great deal of excitement that I present for your consideration approval of an interlocal agreement with the City of Asheville to fully consolidate emergency nine-one-one dispatch services. Though it's taken a considerable amount of time, I think the excitement comes mostly from the fact that this agreement will position our nine-one-one call center up for additional success but also help us to serve some of the most vulnerable people in our community. With me today is Brooke Haslett, who's the nine-one-one Division Manager. And so if you have any questions related to the operations of the center, she'll, she's prepared to respond to those. Before we move into the presentation, I would like to show gratitude to and for the county staff team who worked on this effort. Brooke provided invaluable subject matter expertise, also Dr. Lee Creighton from Strategy and Innovations Department, John Hudson from the Budget Department, Melissa Reichman from Human Resources, of course Kurt Euler from Legal, also to a couple of our department heads who provided support, Taylor Jones from Emergency Services, as well as Sharon Burke from Human Resources. We've talked quite a bit about the benefits of consolidation, specifically when we brought forward in the spring interlocal agreements with the towns of Black Mountain and Montry. We talked about how it certainly enhances service provision. We, through consolidation, also eliminate call transfers that saves a significant amount of time in emergency response, provides consistency and more effective service and allows for better information sharing across our agencies and to our first responders. What we haven't talked a whole lot about with regard to benefits is how consolidation will really create a foundation for assuring that our most appropriate response to our emergency needs of our residents are met and effectively reimagining public safety. Before moving into the major terms of the agreement, just want to kind of provide a a view of how we're currently arranged. We currently provide dispatch services for Asheville Fire through an interlocal agreement. If you approve this agreement on tonight, we will maintain services for Asheville Fire but then also expand services, dispatch services for Asheville Police. Asheville Police is currently co-located at our Irwin Hills Road facility. So this consolidation will provide consistency in leadership processes, proceed, excuse me, procedures that support a true team environment, which in turn cultivates collaboration and partnership to the main goal, which is public safety. The major topics of discussion as a part of this effort were costs, which of course includes the staff that's needed to effectively consolidate, also access to information and data as well as operational decisions. We were able to work through this to get a draft agreement in place and the agreement shows terms that are agreeable to both the county and the city. Share a little bit more detail around the staff discussion. As you know, we can make all the plans in the world, but if we're not making sure that staff has the capacity that they need, the plans are all for naught. One of the things that was really important to us as a part of this effort was to try the best that we could to hold staff harmless in this consolidation. In order to effectively consolidate, the county will have to add twenty-four positions, twenty-two of which will be fully funded through a cost share with the City of Asheville. And that would be nineteen telecommunicators and three-room supervisors. The City of Asheville staff that are currently providing police dispatch services will become county employees and of course be converted and subsequently subject to county policies, procedures and regulations. Staff will be held harmless with regards to pay and benefits. It was important to the county to make sure that the terms set the new consolidated center up for success and did not start us at any deficits. We have been, already started concerted effort for recruitment, which I think was culminated in a successful job fair that happened on November sixth. Nonetheless, the contract includes a provision that the city will provide backup support to the center for up to six months. Their ability to provide that support will be based on city staff availability. With regards to facilities, any relocations for our primary and our backup center will be at the county's discretion. Currently, our primary center is at the Irwin Hills location and the backup center is at a city location downtown. The consolidation does necessitate more backup center space that the city's location will not, cannot accommodate. We did anticipate that and in our FY twenty-two, our current CIP budget includes funding to relocate our current backup center. That effort is currently underway. Finally, one of the benefits of consolidation is the opportunity to standardize protocols where it makes sense and where it doesn't adversely impact operations for any of our responder agencies. So so that those decisions can be made with advisement and feedback from those agencies. The agreement also establishes a Communications and Steering Committee. That committee will remain active as long as the cost share is implemented. So you'll see here that there are eight members to that committee, including leadership from the county, from the Sheriff's Office, from both the City of Asheville Police and City of Asheville Fire. And then there'll be representation from amongst each of our municipal law enforcement agencies and fire and county fire departments. We've also included a community member at large, which will be selected by this, by this body. It's also important to share at a high level what the committee will be responsible for and what they will not be responsible for. The committee is responsible for reviewing and recommending any revisions to protocols and operational procedures. They will review and make recommendations to the Department Director on the budget that will be submitted to the county manager for consideration. And they'll resolve any questions or issues that come up with regards to how staff is is operating at the center. They will not be responsible for the actual creation of the budget, of course, just like any other department. The county manager will be presenting a recommended budget for your consideration on an annual basis. Won't be responsible for the actual operations, neither any hiring, firing, selection or performance review for staff or departmental leadership. So, and the agreement is attached to your agenda, so you'll be able to read that if you haven't in in great detail. I don't know if you want to take the budget amendment, but what we'll be asking tonight is that you approve an interlocal agreement regarding nine-one-one dispatch with the City of Asheville. Also approve a budget amendment that transfers and increase the current year nine-one-one budget by about one million dollars. We'll add twenty-four positions and you see the positions listed listed here and establish a departmental budget. With respect to holding staff harmless, we're also asking that you approve a resolution to waive the required twelve-month probationary period for property interest for staff from the city that have been with the city for twelve months or more and then also waive the required four-and-a-half percent increase after six months. We've evaluated salaries and we will be bringing over staff. Some staff will be actually making a little bit more than what they make, but it's in line with our pay scale and their experience, so. That is all.
All right, thank you, DK, and thanks to everyone who's worked really hard to bring this together from the county and the city and. Commissioners, are there any questions?
DK, I guess I have one question, and maybe I missed it, but I presume or or memory tells me that there are some open positions as well that we would be opening up for for hiring for the same purpose. Is that underway or?
That's correct. We've already started a really accelerated recruitment process. We started there with the job fair and nine-one-one staff leadership is already working to get those positions filled as soon as possible. I guess the safety net there is that the city will provide additional staff support for up to six months. What we hope will happen is that we'll get those positions to the level where we need them to be for minimal staffing prior to the effective date of January first.
Great, thank you and congrats on this coming to a conclusion and thank you for all your work and your staff as well and this is awesome and I'm excited.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make, I think the first of three motions required to pass this. First motion would be the approval of the interlocal agreement regarding nine-one-one dispatch services between Buncombe County and the City of Asheville. Second.
Any further discussion? I just want to reiterate again, appreciation for everyone working on this. I think I was on the Asheville City Council like fifteen years ago when the staff of the city and the county were not even located, I think physically in the same building. They were in different parts of the community and some folks back then, and I I take no credit for it, it's not an initiative. I spearheaded, but some folks started the process of thinking, how do we start getting our people together? And they they did things to start co-locating and there's been other improvements made over time since then. But this is, this is really the final step to really bring all the different folks together to create the best model for how we can deliver this critical service to the people of Buncombe County in the most efficient way possible that will make a difference in getting help to people who need it, no matter what that kind of help is. So, thank you to the county manager and DK and everyone you, everyone who's worked on this. We really appreciate this. It's complicated and requires a lot of cooperation and so it's exciting to see us moving this ahead. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Is there a presentation for the budget amendment or can we go ahead and make a motion to approve that?
No, I mean, I'm I'm happy to answer any questions you might have related to the budget amendment, but DK covered it in general.
Okay, well then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget amendment as described in the attached ordinance. Second.
And that includes the creation of the twenty-four full-time positions. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
And finally, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution to waive the twelve-month probationary period for property interest in job and required up to four point five percent increase for transferred staff that have been with the city for twelve or more months. Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, great, great, great job, everyone. Thanks so much. Look forward to seeing this move ahead. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is consideration of a budget amendment for Behavioral Health Planning Grant.
Yes, so the next two budget amendments that are on your agenda, you would have heard from both emergency services as well as health and human services related to grant awards through Dogwood Health. And so the first is a request to budget a total amount of five hundred thousand dollars for Buncombe County Emergency Services, who has received a grant for the expansion of the post overdose response team. This will provide mobile suboxone, suboxone administration and serve as a twenty-four-seven access frontline bridge to care. So the request today is to establish five grant-funded positions. That's four grant-funded community paramedics, one peer support coordinator, as well as the startup vehicle and equipment costs for six months of the of the MAT pilot program. So, the request is to establish the grant revenue and expenditure budget to establish the five grant-funded positions for as long as the funding is available and accept the grant.
Commissioners, is there a motion?
So can we combine this all into one motion?
I think so.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the Dogwood Health Trust grant and appropriative funds, approve the addition of full-time limited positions and approve the budget amendment.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, it's approved. Jennifer, thanks for your help with all these.
Sure, thank you. I have one more to cover.
Oh, yeah.
I do.
Yes, you do.
So this is related to the second grant that has been awarded through Dogwood Health Trust. This is $496,472 to fund collaborative planning for substance use disorder and behavioral health. These dollars will support two grant-funded positions for two years to plan for the upcoming opioid settlement dollars. The request is for a grant-funded program manager, too, for behavioral health, administratively reporting in the county manager's office, and one management analyst who will provide evaluation services and will administratively, administratively report to the Office of Strategy and Innovation. So that is the request, and then $10,000 of these funds would be used to support equipment and office supplies over the two-year period.
Commissioners, is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right. The last item under new business is consideration of recovery fund awards. And Rachel Nygaard is going to help us with this presentation.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
As you stated, I'm Rachel Nygaard, and I'm here this evening to speak with you about the recovery funding awards. This is the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds that Buncombe County has received through ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. As usual, I'll cover a little bit of background, so anyone listening tonight has the framing and understanding of the funds. We'll talk about the process that Buncombe County has followed since first learning about these funds back in the spring. We will talk about some other funding opportunities that Buncombe County is watching as we look to maximize and leverage and make best use of matching projects to the right funding sources or the, the best funding sources. And we ultimately will pass to you, the Board of Commissioners, to consider a round of additional awards this evening. So, quick background. These recovery funds, like I said, are called coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. And for short, we call them, we refer to these funds as recovery funds. These are funds that are direct to Buncombe County from the federal government. And Buncombe County's total allocation is $50.7 million. The first half of the funds were received back in May, and the second half is scheduled for 12 months later, so we're looking at next May of 2022. Anyone who wants to follow along and read any of the materials and look at awards made to date, things like that, can do that at buncom county.org/recoveryfunding. A reminder around the parameters that have been set for us by the federal government on the uses of these funds. These are related to recovering from COVID-19 and its negative economic impacts. We can use funds towards public health, negative economic impacts, services to disproportionately impacted communities, premium pay, infrastructure, revenue replacement, and fund administration. And there are examples there that we've talked about in previous sessions together that are included here in the slide deck as reference. So, the process that we followed, I mentioned back in the spring. It was March when the funds were, when the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law and the funds were approved, began with board priorities, went out to community input to gather information, community sentiment, as well as actually accompanying survey went to county employees around input on the sentiment around use of funds. The fund priorities were established based on guidance, and an RFP was issued, a request for proposals process, back in the summer. So those projects came in, in July, and the first round of awards was approved by this body, the Board of Commissioners for the county, on August 31st. And since then, we've been helping the board gather additional public input through input sessions, through comment from applicant organizations, and assisting with follow-up to gather information, additional information and review for the Board of Commissioners. So here we are on November 16th, ready for the next round of awards. This is a reminder of what was awarded in August. And you can see the projects, they're listed by the U.S. Treasury categories from public health down to project administration. There were 11 million, $394,955 of awards in that first round. Commissioners, tonight, we're bringing you this potential list of additional awards. This was put together based on individualized feedback as we gathered infor, infor, information and input from each of you about the projects you'd like to see funded and at what levels. And together, it adds up to a slate of another roughly a million, 11 million dollars of awards. This is 11 million, $35,004. Again, spread across those categories. In public health, it's approximately $2.4 million of awards. Negative economic impacts, again, another approximately $2.4 million. Disproportionately impacted communities, 5.8 million. And a little bit less than half a million in the infrastructure category. During the August 31st session, I read the names and amounts of the projects, so I'll do that again now. Under public health, we have RHA Health Services and Buncombe County Community Paramedic Collaborative, awarded at 1.3 million and 1,074,873 respectively. In the negative economic impacts category, we have Asheville Area Arts Council, 50,000. Asheville Museum of Science, 130,000. Babies Need Bottoms, 50,000. Eagle Market Street Development Corporation, 375,000. Green Built Alliance, 250,000. Mountain Biz Works, Mountain Community Capital Fund, 1,250,000. The Ark of Buncombe County, 50,000. We Give a Share, 50,000. Sorry, We Give a Share is 160,000. Thank you. And Working Wheels, 92,400. I'm not reading the names of the projects as I go, but they're listed on the slide. And members of the public who wish to read more information will be able to view a full copy of each of these proposals on buncom county.org/recoveryfunding. So continuing with the services to disproportionately impacted communities, we have Habitat for Humanity at 1,600,000. Buncombe County Home Repair at 400,000. Mountain Child Advocacy Center at 262,500. Mountain Housing Opportunities at 2,545,231. And the Mediation Center, which I'll call out, is a collaborative application that's the lead entity. Their proposal, or their recommended or potential, excuse me, their potential award amount is 1 million. And then we've got one project in infrastructure related to internet access at Land of Sky Regional Council for 445,000. So that's the slate of potential additional awards that are up for discussion and consideration this evening. But before we get there, I'll talk about next steps. So the items of housekeeping and business that occur on the staff side once Buncombe County Commissioners adopt these awards. For any that are economic development allocations, we do have some additional steps that we follow to stay in alignment with state statutes, including public notice, public hearing, and an additional authorization vote. So you would anticipate seeing that come forward on a future agenda. Staff will put together written agreements for all projects. So that's contracts, external contracts for subrecipients, as well as also written agreements for internally, internally awarded departmental projects. We are underway with monitoring and reporting the August awards, and we'll continue that with any additional awards as they're made, both on the fiscal, the financial side, as well as the program or the impact side. And because we talked about additional funds coming, we will continue to work with the board on scenarios for the, what the possible additional rounds of funding can look like. Both additional awards and potential additional application rounds. And another item that we've been doing throughout is monitoring other funding sources, in particular pending legislation that might be a potential funding source for some of the projects that were submitted through this request for proposals process. I'm going to highlight a couple real quick. One of them has a long name called Fiscal Recovery Infrastructure and Disaster Relief Flexibility Act. For short, we call this the ARPA Flexibility Bill. This is a federal, a piece of federal legislation that has passed one of the two chambers, passed the U.S. Senate, and essentially modifies the existing structure for the recovery funding. This coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funding, if this passed, would be able to be used for more spending categories, and we would also have more flexibility with spending timeframes. An example of a spending category that gets added is general government. So you can imagine the, the wide scope of services that Buncombe County could potentially fund with these funds if that is approved, as well as natural disasters, transportation, and infrastructure projects. So we'll keep watching that one and keep you posted. Speaking of infrastructure, when we put these slides together, this had passed the House and Senate in yesterday, was signed into law by the president. So we do now have an Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that has been passed, and it includes investments, both reauthorization of existing programs as well as new investments for a number of different types of programs, including transportation, water, power and energy, environmental remediation, public lands, broadband, and resilience. So that's pretty open-ended. There's a link, by the way, at the bottom of these slides for anyone who wants to follow along and really likes to dig in and look at a lot of detail on the legislative analysis side. But we called out a few items here that the county can look at that would be potential ways that we, as an entity, might be able to draw some funding down from this bill toward projects. Transit, greenways, weatherization, cybersecurity, carbon reduction, and broadband. So there's not a one-to-one match for all of those categories with proposals that are sitting in the ARPA hopper, if you will, right now, but knowing that we're going into additional potential award rounds, this funding can help us tailor what seems like the best fit for recovery funding versus what might be a great fit for the infrastructure funding. And we will stay tuned as this all unfolds. Some funding will come to local communities directly from the federal government, some will go through the state, some will come as formula funding, sort of automatic grants, and some of it will be competitive grant opportunities that localities can apply for. So it's a real mix, and we'll keep our eye on it and keep you posted. So back to the topic at hand, the requested board action this evening is to consider approval of the recovery funding awards. And I'm happy to flip it back to the, actually don't have the slides up, but the person controlling the slides in the background might flip it back to the list of awards that are up for consideration. There they are. And I would be happy to entertain any questions. And if none, at that time, we'll pass to the board for your discussion and consideration.
Terrific. Thanks, Rachel. Commissioners, are there any questions?
I'd like to move. It will approve the second round of ARPA funding in the amount of 11 million, 35,004.
I'll second.
Motion to approve second round of ARPA funding in the amount of 11 million, 35,004 for the specific organizations at the amounts listed in the agenda report. That was just reviewed. Further discussion? I would, again, like to thank our staff for helping work with the commission really closely on evaluating the many, you know, more than 100 proposals that came into the county, both internally generated proposals from county departments, as well as a much larger group of community-developed proposals that came to us. The commission, you know, took the approach of really creating a very wide-open process to consider the potential use of these funds. And we opened up the process to really be able to hear from the community and the many organizations in the community who work on these kinds of issues day in and day out, to be able to bring forward their ideas for what might be the most impactful way to use these national recovery funds. So, also thanks to all the organizations in the community who took time to share their ideas and speak to us. And it was a very difficult set of decisions because the amount of requested, requests we received and really compelling proposals greatly exceeded the amount of funds that we had to allocate during this round of funding. As the staff have said, we're going to get the second half of this funding in the spring of next year. So there are, there is a significant additional level of resources that we'll be able to allocate next spring. So, but there were many compelling ideas, and I also just really appreciate all the time the commissioners put into this. I know over the last several months, this has required a lot of time, many meetings, many conversations, and thoughtful consideration from the commissioners around all these different proposals we had. And to be able to arrive at the decision point to make these investments this evening. I, I know there's, you know, I, I don't want to kind of share my own thoughts on all of these, but just, just a couple of the projects I would just kind of highlight as examples of what this is going to mean for the community. You know, we've got these two outstanding proposals from Mountain Biz Works and the Eagle Market Street Development Corporation that will be investing significantly to help develop more locally-owned businesses with a focus on minority business development and expansion in Buncombe County, both using really innovative strategies for small business loans and equity investments into the people in our community who have ideas for how to create new jobs and create new opportunities in Buncombe County, and working with these really strong proven partners. Great proposal from our staff in Buncombe County Emergency Medical Services for further strengthening our community paramedics program. Great proposals from Habitat for Humanity and Mountain Housing for expanded home ownership development in Buncombe County. The mountain housing proposal will result in the development of 120 additional deeply affordable and permanently affordable apartments at a great location in Buncombe County. And we're also supporting folks being able to stay in their own homes safely through the, through the home repair program, which provides oftentimes fairly small amounts of money, but to address critical repair needs for senior citizens and disabled residents in our community so that they can continue to live safely in their, in their own homes. Just as a small example of the many different kinds of great projects that are included in this list of funding. So, thanks to everyone who helped bring us to a set of difficult decisions, but, but I think really exciting investments for our community. That will make a, you know, I think all along, we wanted to be able to say we could, we could make a set of decisions that we'll be able to look back on and know it made a really positive difference in the community. And this set of projects and investments definitely will. So, I'm really excited to support it.
And Brownie, that's something I don't think we can emphasize enough, even though this is one-time funding. But the staff, commissioners, and all of us looked at what we can do with these funds that will not only affect our community now, but hopefully for another generation. And also that will start a lot, especially when you talk about Bizwork, Eagle Market, some of the areas that we're working with. But we can't commend the staff enough for what we did. And I know as we go through this, it's hard to make everybody happy. But we've got to do what's right for the community. And we will have a third or more next May to do this. But again, I want to echo what the staff said. And a lady told us from the governor's office, too, about how we were one of the first counties to step up and to open this process to the entire community because all counties didn't do it the way we did it as transparent as we've been.
All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Rachel, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And onward with all of these. And so the, and just in terms of, in terms of next steps, so the staff will be working on contracts with the different organizations. And then all of the economic development items, we will hold a separate hearing as required for the economic development proposals.
We would have to publicize that.
Great. All right. Very good. Commissioners, we've got a couple of board items to address this evening. First, we have the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board Advisory Committee. We've got one appointment that we need to make.
Continue to appoint Tara on the Kraken.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Then we come to the Strategic Partnership Grants Committee. We discussed this at our last meeting and interviewed these really good candidates. But we were not able to achieve a minority, I mean, a majority decision on this. Tara Schultz and Ray Hemant Chandra both had, I think, three, three votes of support. So, we were at an impasse. So, we're going to try again tonight. And what I'd like to do is just start over on Commissioner Edward's side. And if each commissioner could just indicate who you'd like to support and we'll see what happens.
Tara Schultz.
Ray.
Can I just clarify, Chairman Newman, are you asking us to decide between Tara and Ray or between any of the names listed?
You know, you, you could vote for anyone, but I would predict that if you don't pick one of those, we're going to be at three and three again.
I will vote for Ray Hemant Chandra.
I'm also voting for, for Ray.
Tara Schultz.
Okay, all right. Thank you all. Thank you both for applying for strategic partners. Let's see.
Chairman Newman, I do want to mention a few things that was not on the actual, excuse me, put it out, not on the agenda. That were not on the agenda but need to be considered or give some direction on how we need to move forward. The first item is for the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. A couple of meetings ago, there was a question about Rob Thomas and him not being, living no longer in the county. And that was confirmed. So, there needs to be consideration on replacing him on the Comp Plan Steering Committee. At the time, when we did interviews for all of the individuals, we still have that ranking system. If that needs to be sent back out to the commission or if we need to open it back up for application, it's just dependent upon what we wanted to do. And I think there was, just to throw it back out there, there were some questions about diversity the last time this discussion came up, so. So, just, just want to get some direction.
Yeah, we do need to fill that vacancy. So, Commissioner Whitesides, we were talking after one of those last meetings. Did you have someone that you were going to speak with or had spoken to who might be interested in applying for that vacancy?
He's on the, we appointed him.
We've already appointed, so does that mean we fill the position that?
Not, not this one. He filled another position.
Okay.
When I was talking.
Oh, that was, so that wasn't for this?
No.
Okay, so we need to, we need to think about the process to recruit for this position.
I know several people I can talk to.
I think we can look at the existing list of applicants, but I would suggest we also open it up to see if anybody else is interested in applying. So, let's all encourage someone to apply if, you know, someone is interested. Rob was one of the African-American folks serving on the board. So, it would be great to, to recruit some other minority candidates for this vacancy. So, let's open it back up. Let's see what applications come in between now and the next meeting. And we'll, we'll proceed to make a decision. Okay?
Thank you for the direction.
Sure.
The next topic or the next board is the Via Health Board. Previously, the commissioners decided to let county manager pick a designate for this particular board to represent the county. But looking forward and with some help from some staff, that position actually needs to be a commissioner. In their bylaws, it has to be a commissioner that represents the county as well as the county manager has a designate. That designate for the county manager is Assistant County Manager DK Wesley. But the county Board of Commissioners need to make an appointment for that position.
Okay. So, it's two different positions?
It is. We need to have one as a commissioner.
Okay. Well, I would ask all the commissioners to think about that. And if anybody is interested, does anybody have an interest in it? I mean, you, you know, you can think about it more, but does anybody potentially have an interest in it that you would indicate at this time?
Potentially. I'd love to learn more and, of course, you have better commissioners, too.
Okay.
And a little background, they typically have one meeting once a month. It's typically not more than once a month. And it's at 200 Ridgefield Court, and that is within the city of Asheville. So, and right now, there are no meetings set for November, December, or Jan, or anytime during the next year at this time, at this time. So, I think they're making this schedule as far as.
I'll do it. So, all right, so Jasmine's potentially interested. But, but y'all, others, please think about it and let's plan on making a decision on who to appoint from our board at the next meeting.
Yes, I believe that is a time-sensitive position. So, we would make sure we have that on the list for this gentleman.
We'll be sure to make that decision at our next meeting. Great. Great. Anyone else or anything else? Lamar, Michael?
I think you skipped over the Industrial Facilities Pollution Control Financing Authority appointments.
Oh, yeah. Where's the list on the? I got one. Oh, yeah. I found it on the website, but, thanks. All right, we need to appoint. We need to appoint all of these people.
Yes, yes, please.
But we need to reappoint and newly, newly appoint people. All right. I'll make a motion that we reappoint Michael Frew, John Lyda, and Christopher Bradford, and that we also appoint for new appointments, Don Warren and John Hudson.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And do we also need to make a motion to direct the clerk to announce vacancies for the authority? If you're, if you're going to do it, I think that's all that matters. All right, I think we're good. Thank you. All right, we have a couple of announcements. On December 7th at 3:00 PM, the commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On December 7th at 5:00 PM, the commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On December 9th at noon, the commissioners will hold a budget retreat at AB Tech at 9 Geneveve Circle, Asheville, North Carolina, 28801.
Last bit of clarity, can we talk about our second meeting in December or what the plan is for the rest of December?
Al's going to be in Turkey. Really? Okay, so we oftentimes don't have a second meeting. But I think previously, we said we would hold it if we needed to hold it. There wasn't anything identified yet at this time. Is there anything identified yet?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, if it's okay with staff, then we'll, we'll continue to not plan on holding it. But if there is a need to hold a meeting, please let us know and we'll do it. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye, we're adjourned.